Manager, can you start us on the storm discussion?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. And as you know, earlier this month, we received the after-action reports on Winter Storm Yuri. As you know, that was a statewide catastrophic event layered on top of an already historic global pandemic. But the city of Austin, as we noted, like the state of Texas, was unprepared for such a complex disaster. You heard from both our consultants that did the after-action report, working with staff and stakeholders, and you also heard from Austin Energy and Austin Water. Today, I did want to open up with having both Juan Ortiz, our Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and our General Manager for Austin Energy, as well as our Director for Austin Water, highlight some of the key areas that we are focused on, the actions that we have taken, and that we will be asking, that we are asking our staff to do so we know that if a storm were to happen today, that we would be better prepared than we were last February. I think that's an important place to start, and we want to make sure that our community is just as prepared for that event. As our staff comes in, and I see Juan coming in the chambers right now, I did want to acknowledge and appreciate all the significant work that went on during the storm by not only our city employees, but also our community members. This was a community response that we needed to take, and we had so many individuals and organizations step up to the plate to help us do that response. We will need the next event, as we know that there will be more events like this in the future, to be done with a better response than we had for Winter Storm Yuri. We are, we know and are hopeful that some of the actions that we have taken already will provide a better response than we've had. But we know that we will continue to evaluate how we responded and how we need to do better in the future. But to begin, I'm going to ask Juan Ortiz, our Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, just to summarize some of those key actions that have been taken since the last event and things that we are working on internally and that we also are asking our community to do in the case that we will have a winter storm this year. Director Ortiz.
So, Manager, thank you. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much for the opportunity to come back and talk to you and give you a little update on the progress that we're making as we continue to work through the after-action items from Winter Storm Yuri. You know, and what I wanted to make sure that I relay to you all that even once the storm ended at the end of last spring, preparedness is something that the city conducts year-round. We're very quickly, we're moving to look at what preparedness activities we need to be engaging to ensure that we're ready for the hazards that are going to impact or threaten our community during the summer. Specifically, as we went into the summer, we were concerned with what if there was another hurricane this year? And what readiness levels we need to be prepared for? The extreme heat conditions, making sure that we had cooling centers established, ready to go. So those coordination activities, really, it's a year-round process when we look at preparedness. As we go into now, into the fall and soon here into the winter season, our focus is shifting. And so when we look at the recommendations from the after-action, it is important to realize that our focus is to ensure that we are ready for this upcoming winter weather season. And that is what we're doing. That's what we have been doing. And working hard with all the different departments to make sure that we're coordinating and communicating. And I just want to kind of give you a little report on some of the activities that we're doing. And I mentioned some of these during the last presentation. We rolled out a new tool to communicate with those who are deaf, blind, and hard-earring because we wanted to make sure that all the communications are accessible to everybody in our community. And we're not stopping there. We're also working to ensure that we have translation services available to us, not just from within our region, but also outside of our region. Because what we learned from the winter storm was that the companies or the services that we may use here in our region, they may also be impacted in future storms, just like they were impacted during this last storm. And therefore, we need to be, we need to diversify our capabilities and make sure that we have help available across the country and make sure that we're able to move very quickly to mobilize in that area. We have rolled out our Ready Central Texas campaign, which is focusing to ensure that the public has accessible information to know how to prepare, not just for winter weather, but for all the hazards throughout the year. Every year, we've also upgraded our, the app that we have, the Ready Central Texas app that anybody can download from the Apple Store or from the Android Store. And that's available for free. We've added a winter weather component to that app so that they have specific winter weather information. And we'll be working with the companies that provide this service to look at how we can make this information available in multiple languages so that we also have that available to other, in other languages and make the information accessible to all members of our community as well. We've relayed training required informations to our public information officers to ensure that they are prepared and are looking at enhancing the prescription of messages that would be translated in multiple languages. So we're trying to, you know, get ahead of the game as we learn that this information needs to be very quickly translated and made available in future incidents. As you know, as I mentioned last time, council approved funding for Resiliency Hub project. And I can say that that work continues, that initiative has, is underway. During the Public Health Subcommittee, there should have been a report provided on the status of that. And that's a work group that not just includes the city, includes Austin Independent School District, Travis County, and we're working to ensure that we have a robust group to look at how we can establish these resiliency hubs in our community to support them in the event of an emergency or disaster in the future. So that work continues. Again, as we go into the winter weather season, we have done some communications to our partners and our departments to ensure that folks are preparing. We've communicated with the departments and make sure that we looked at what we see as a potential problem and what we see as the resilient, excuse me, supply chain management issue that is facing our country. So Communications has already gone out, asking departments to evaluate their contracts, evaluate their supplies, and also ensure that we have ample supplies on hand for services as well as for emergency response operations and to order supplies early so that we are not waiting for those in the middle of a disaster because of the challenges that the supply chain management will create. In addition to that, tomorrow, we have our winter weather seminar, which we're going to have, where we brought, we're bringing in all our city and county departments, as well as some of our community partners to go through winter weather preparedness activities and share information and kind of review the plan with them and make sure that everybody is aware of what is a proper protocol, how do the streets get sanded, what, who has the responsibility to sandy the sidewalks, what to do, what not to do, what are the things that everybody needs to have in hand as we prepare for the winter weather season? And that is, that is an event that is scheduled for tomorrow. We're going to be communicating with the departments about that, and I expect full attendance from all the departments, from the city and the county as well. In addition to that, we have our monthly meeting with our emergency management, single points of contact. We are meeting with them on Thursday, and we meet with them to ensure that we go through the list of items that we need to be working to prepare. And some of these preparedness activities that we're going to be discussing are some of the same preparedness activities that were identified in the after-action report that was presented to you at the last council meeting. Again, we're looking at updated inventory of facilities that can be used for shelters and their infrastructure. One of the things that we're doing is that we're not going to wait for the storm. We're going to go ahead and pre-deploy. And what we're doing is pre-deploying the shelter supplies to go to each one of those shelter locations we're identifying. And we're working with our community partners to look at what those capabilities are. In fact, yesterday, I had meetings both with the American Red Cross of Central Texas, as well as the Austin Disaster Relief Network. And we have additional meetings with other community partners to make sure that we're reviewing the roles and responsibilities, looking at the impacts from the pandemic, and looking at what the benefits now that we have had, almost a year of vaccinations already underway, and looking at what additional capabilities these departments and agencies will be able to put on the table to ensure that our community is prepared and able to respond as we move forward. I also want to let you know that we took these 132 recommendations from the after-action report. And we got with our team that is working on continuity of operations, plan migration. We are, we've asked all the departments to update their coop plans. But we're also in the process, we're in the second phase of migrating those plants into a coop management system so that those can be more readily accessible and we're able to evaluate them in a much faster manner. We took that, we asked this same group to kind of look at these 132 recommendations and look at which are the ones that have the highest impact on life, safety, and health? And look at what is the, which ones are the ones that we can put in play in a fast manner and focus on the after-action priorities? And we have identified 32 of those after actions that we're working to ensure that the work is, that continues and very quickly are addressed. Let me say, we're working on all 132, but we want to make sure that we're focusing on those that have the greatest impact of protecting our citizens' lives and health and making sure that it makes us a more resilient community as we move forward. So that is action that is already, has happened, and that we're working to ensure that all the departments continue to move in that direction. Again, you know, as it was reported, there are some enhancements that Austin Energy reported last time. We're working with Austin 311 offices to look at those critical load customers to safeguard against power outages from load shed events. And there were other activities that were reported by Austin Energy, as well as Austin Water. And again, Austin Water, you know, Greg Mazzario, I think, did a great job of explaining the, you know, what they're doing, making, and the key part here is that we, as the citizens of this community, we need to become more aware of our, of what we have in our homes as far as how to, you know, how to safeguard our home and how to make sure that, how do you address water that's coming into your home? Identify your shut-off valve, identify those critical areas to protect your home, not just from power and water, but look at, become us more, help us, help our citizens become more engaged in what things they can do that will protect them as well as ensure that the services that we're providing are available for everybody. And the specific example that I'm talking about is the example that Greg talked about, how do you drip a faucet, right? And I think that was an excellent example of, you don't need to drip all the faucets, you need to just drip one. And recognize the fact that if everybody does that, does that, then there's a way of how we can ensure that our water availability is more robust for everybody in the community. In addition to that, let me tell you, some of the departments are reporting back to me that they're conducting internal reviews of their winter storm procedures. They are, departments have already conducted internal tabletop exercises, and some of them are going to be conducting them here in the next coming days, coming weeks, with a focus of having winter preparedness discussed and looking at what measures that they can take to ensure that they, that they're prepared. Another good example is the Fleet Services Department has communicated with all the departments and asking them and is continuing to work with them to identify the right level of training that departments need to have. For example, identify the number of chains for the different types of vehicles, the different types of chains, and making sure that the departments have personnel that are trained to know how to put those chains on in the field and not have to go into Fleet Services to get those chains installed. So that's how we're trying to be more flexible in the response. There's a whole list of activities that need to happen whenever we have a strong winter freeze warning. And as much as we can push out into the field so that departments can be out-prepared and carry on some of these activities, then the better we're going to be able to address some of the other critical areas, like, for example, ensure that every generator that we have out in the fleet, out in the field, is properly fueled and ready to go in the event of a power outage. And we have fuel trucks available to go out and tap those generators, as well as look at those facilities that have portable water tankers, make sure that those water tankers are filled in advance of the storm so if there's a water disruption, that we have plenty of supply to carry us during those coming days. That will allow us to ensure that we're prepared to open up shelters, open up cold weather facilities in the event of cold weather nights, and ensure that we have, look at those mask care needs and be establishing the procedures to ensure that if there is a need to support some of our community partner agencies, that the city and the county are ready to go to make those, to make ourselves available in addressing the needs of the community as we move forward. Those are just some of the examples, some of the activities that we are, have been doing and are continuing to do as we move forward with this winter weather season, as well as any other hazard that our community is going to face in the future.
Thank you, Director Ortiz. And I'm just going to ask both from Austin Water and Austin Energy, I think we have Sidney Jackson, if you could come to the podium and just, or Jackie Sargent is going to just highlight a few of the things that have happened since the last storm that will prepare our community better, to make sure that we're more resilient. And if there are any asks that you have for our community going forward.
Thank you, Spencer. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Jackie Sargent, Austin Energy General Manager. I want to thank you for your interest and your support as we work through implementing the findings of our after-action review. Please be assured that our after-action review was an honest, critical assessment of what worked well and what needs follow-up. Austin Energy immediately started identifying observations and findings during the winter storms, the ERCOT energy emergency, and after. Additionally, we initiated implementation of findings as soon as practical. As my Deputy General Manager and Chief Operating Officer, Sidney Jackson, previously shared and presented, Austin Energy identified 19 observations and 112 follow-up actions. Of those findings, 29% have been completed, 50% are in progress, meaning they are working toward a defined completion date, and 21% will be ongoing, meaning that they are measures that have been or will become part of ongoing operations at Austin Energy. As we identified in our report, there are several findings that we expect to be completed by the end of this year. I want to assure you that these results, the results of these efforts, we are much better positioned for the next major incident that our community will face. We are using everything we learned to ensure we adapt, improve, and respond to better serve our entire community. I will now turn it over to Deputy General Manager and Chief Operating Officer Jackson to share a few of the things that we have completed, that are in progress, and that will be ongoing for our operations. Sidney?
Thank you, Jackie. Mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to take just a few brief moments to highlight some of the completed items of the Austin Energy After Action Report. I'd like to reemphasize that we did not wait until the report's completion to start these action items. And we have worked to include in great detail the actions that are needed as well as the delivery dates that we expect. Looking at observation number one, and this is included in the after-action report, we have completed several outage map updates. Technical issues for outages not reflected in the outage map have been completed. We have completed modifications to the outage maps that show shading that was causing confusion. That has been removed. We have completed internal training as it relates to key internal systems that populate the outage map to assure that we have timely updates. Those have been completed as well. But we do have in-progress enhancements with the outage map vendor in terms of text alerts and social media integrations, and that is expected for quarter two, 2022. Moving to observation number three, medical vulnerability registry. We are in process, we're working with other city of Austin departments to establish a coordinated communication process to assist the medically vulnerable, and that's expected to be completed Q1, 2022. Looking at observation number five, the management of ERCOT mandated load shed or load curtailments. On an ongoing basis, we continue to evaluate Austin Energy Systems for appropriate sectionalization. Also, for Q4, 2021, we are increasing our coordination with commercial industrial customers, and a lot of that work has well, has begun, and a lot of effort has been already expended in that space. Ongoing basis, we will also continue active engagement in the ERCOT PUC and Public Utility Commission in the ERCOT regulatory space. Again, a lot of efforts and contributions have been underway in that space. Looking at observation number six, the ERCOT market and generation plants. On an ongoing basis, we continue to engage our regulatory requirements for weatherization for our power plants. And this includes our compliance obligations as they change over time. With a Q4, 2021 completion date, we will be evaluating upgrades to heat tracing for some of the outside water supply lines. We are reviewing our weatherization practices to include checklists and procedures. And then we are also conducting evaluations with third-party entities reviewing our weatherization methods. Moving to observation number eight, management of vegetation near power lines. We continue ongoing, continued vegetation management cycle programs, working to manage line clearances between trees and vegetation. And as many of you are aware, we continue the communication with stakeholders and, excuse me, homeowners association and other community organizations and stakeholders around the importance of vegetation management. Observation number 12, fleet management and vehicle travel during the winter storm. We have completed identification of vehicle types and needed winter storm equipment. This is a brief summary of our after-action reports. As you know, there was 112 of follow-up actions. And this is, again, just a brief overview of some of those key follow-up actions.
Thank you, Sidney. And I know we want to get to questions, but I did want to conclude with some of the actions that Austin Water has taken as a result of last year's, last February storm. Director Mazzaro's.
Thank you, Manager. Council, just to frame up again from our last conversation, we really examined three areas, our incident response, our communication strategies, and what we termed a technical review of our infrastructure systems. And really have taken affirmative steps in all those areas. As I described in our briefing, on the incident side, we have significantly enhanced our storage of emergency water supplies. We now store 10 times as much emergency water. We have additional contracts, work very closely with Juan and his team on how to distribute those and develop a more refined distribution system approach. We've purchased two water trucks, one's in service already. We have the second one that will be coming and will be in service before the winter. On the communication sides, we've significantly enhanced our communication strategies, multiple language, much more refined approaches to what it means to drip your faucet, what faucet to drip, what's the difference between dripping and streaming, how to turn off the water at your curb, videos to support those. Councilmember Fuentes, we are at Dove Springs with you here. Hopefully, you got a flavor for some of the new content that we had over there. On the infrastructure side, we've taken significant steps. We've repaired all the damage that we incurred from the winter storm, strengthened our heat tracing, blankets, chains, enhanced insulation, which is still underway. Already, we have a new storage tank underway. Councilmember Ellis, you know, through the development process, we have a storage tank underway with a developer in your district to enhance storage. We have more communication or more infrastructure coming. We've totally revamped the way we operate in the winter. Historically, with treatment plants and surface water, we have to take a lot of infrastructure out of service for repair, cleaning, and we've revamped that to keep more infrastructure available to meet peak demand in the winter. And might think unusual that you need to meet peak demand in the winter, but that's exactly what happened during Winter Storm Yuri. And so we've taken steps to be better prepared this winter to meet a peak demand event should we have a similar-type storm. And so that's just kind of a frame-up of the affirmative actions we've taken.
Thank you, Director Mazzaro's. You know, there's a slide at the presentation on November 4th that really framed it up nice for me because, you know, we'll likely have a winter event, but nothing, I don't think, will be the impact that we had. But we will be seeing significant events in the future because of climate change. I mean, we need to prepare for uncertainty, however that may take place. So this was really a precursor of future events. And we need, as a city, as a county, as a community, to be, to be able to respond to storms of greater intensity combined with equally challenging emergencies, concurrent emergencies as we were experiencing with this storm, whether it's, you know, a flood on top of another event. But we certainly are doing things now to help us prepare for those. We need to look into this last event with our eyes wide open about things that we need to do better in the future. We know that we were unprepared to handle this type of event, but we will not let that happen going forward. So that was the whole purpose of doing this after-action report. We embrace it, and we know that we need to do many more things. And we appreciate the support and dedication of our council and other leaders to be able to get through this. This will require a community response, and I know that the Austin community is ready to help tackle this together. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, and we can open it up for questions.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I had two quick questions, the first one to Juan and the second one to Jackie or to Austin Energy. You recognize that, that the community, in a big event like this, it's got to be impossible for the city to be able to meet all the needs that happen. I appreciate all the things you're doing to expand the reach of the city and the county, working together to do that kind of stuff. But how are we better, what's, do we, how, what are the steps that are being taken? What are the institutional changes that are being made in order to better help facilitate, organize, supply, communicate with, respond to, recognize the community efforts that are happening all through the city, all through the region, when we have this kind of an event that government can't, can't meet all the needs by itself?
Good question, Mayor. What we're doing, and what is very important, is that, is that we have, that we created an environment of collaboration. The city and the county can't do it alone. And the non-government organizations cannot do it by themselves either. The private sector cannot do it by themselves. It really takes a group effort. And so what we're trying to create is that open lines of communications, reaching out proactively with all our partners. But what, looking at those methods that were, that gave us success during our pandemic response, during the hurricane response, so that we can, ensure that we can get, get to a level where we can be forthcoming on what capabilities we have, what gaps we can see as a community, and we can work together to try to identify solutions that, that at times the city and the county are going to lead, and at times the private sector is going to lead, or even non-government organizations are going to lead. And that's really that systematic approach of that integrated emergency management process that does not, that does not end with winter storm. It continues, is a cyclical way, as we look at all the different hazards as we move forward. So what we're, what we're doing is reaching out to our partners and sitting down and having that base communications level of understanding. Had lunch with the executive director of the American Red Cross of Central Texas, getting to know us at that level so that we can understand where, where we're all coming from and understand the different parameters of which the different agencies need to work so that we can come together in a way that we can do the best job that we can for our community.
So I really liked the high-level description of that. What I'm looking for is how that actually becomes actionable. Should there be somebody... Should there be somebody newly appointed position that's created that is volunteer or community organizer or liaison, somebody different that's not having another why any other operational duties? Because I watched you get pulled a million different ways during the during the storm. Should there be one person in the event of emergency who does nothing but speak to and communicate with organizing that? Should we have identified 100 people in the community in different parts of the city that are local volunteer coordinators that you meet with once a year? And and they never do anything unless and until there's something actionable that happens like this. But then you have a list of 100 people that are geographically or institutionally integrated into the broader community, but have gone through every year, a morning or an afternoon discussion of of what it was that we saw and what happens when we have a huge disaster that everybody I I hear the goal. I'm well in favor of what I'm missing, manager, is how that actually becomes actionable. And I would really like if you could follow up with a memo or a note to say, we recognize how big this was, and this is how we're going to actualize that, because I think it's it's that important to the community. Juan, thank you very much. My question for Austin Energy real fast is, and I apologize if you all asked this question when I wasn't there and I missed it in the tape. What are we doing or can we now do more rolling blackouts than 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 what we were able to do before?
So, Mayor, again, Jackie Sargent, Austin Energy General Manager, council members, one of the things that we have done is looked at, are there opportunities to further sectionalize our circuits so that we have smaller amounts of load that are able to be shed as we assert what we have to do to meet the ERCOT mandated load shed requirements? And so that will help us to further isolate critical loads so that there's more load that's not critical removed from those circuits and then put into the load shed circuits, giving us greater flexibility and additional loads that can be shut down, but still ensuring that critical loads are met. Another thing that we're doing, and I want to really give a shout out to our industrial and our commercial customers that are working with us on voluntary programs where they will reduce their consumption in intervals based on certain requests from ERCOT. So when we get to a certain amount that ERCOT is asking for load shed on the the grid, then we will have a program in place, and we will have a process in place to ask those customers that have those types of loads that can be voluntarily taken off the grid, that they will do that, and that will help us by giving us more load, you know, not having to use all of those load shed circuits.
That's helpful again, and I think that those are kind of the overarching goal. If you could follow up with a note or a memo that actually tells us that we've done that or we can't do that or how we're doing that with the first, we know what the goal is to see if we can further sectionalize it so that we can create greater opportunities for us to be able to turn off areas because of the critical infrastructure, that kind of thing. I think that's the goal.
That's included in our after action report. It is one of the observations ERCOT mandated load shed and our load shed and what we're looking at, and it talks specifically about sectionalization. And there's also a finding about working with our commercial customers.
And I understand those goals. Have we how many more sections do we have now?
Those aren't goals. The things that are in here are actionable items.
And that I get. So I'm now asking for the follow up. I'd like to know how many sections we had before and how many sections we have after we've taken that action so that we can say to the public, not only are we going to be working in this area, and that's our goal, but this is what we've been able to achieve in reaching that goal.
So we have taken action since the 2011 storm. It's my understanding that we increased the amount of circuits that we could incorporate into load shed by 350%, and that's an ongoing activity. So as you look around the city and you see all of the development that's taking place, and we add circuits, that becomes opportunities for additional circuits that can become part of the load shed program. And so I hear what your request is, and we'll take a look at what we can put in a formal response.
And it's good to do that prospectively with respect to the new areas coming on, knowing how many more ways we're able to sectionalize the existing system and the existing circuits would be helpful, too.
Yeah, I just want to assure you that that is an ongoing effort that we do continuously. It's not something that's a one and done, but as our system evolves, grows, develops, it is an ongoing thing that we do.
And that's great. If we could just pick a point in time, then I'd like to be able to go back to the public and because that's what we heard from so many people. So the more specifics we can give to the community to say, we had 10 circuits before, and now we can individually shut down 100. So we've taken the existing circuits and have figured out how to cut them up into two, three, or five, or 10 pieces so that we have greater flexibility to be able to rotate power outages. I understand this is the goal, and I understand that you'll be constantly working to do that over time. I would like to be able to report to the community success or achievement in that way, and I don't know how that would be described because I don't know enough about what it is, but I would like to be able to to report back to the community in a way that they would understand that we're in fact in a very different place either now or as we meet that goal than we were back then. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. I want to, first of all, invite my colleagues to and the public to review our recent audit and finance committee meeting discussion of the auditor's report related to the winter storm actions. The topics covered were somewhat different than what was in the after action reports, three reports that were presented to us from the city manager. I also want to ask the city manager if we can make sure all four reports are in the backup for this item on today's and on Thursday's sessions. The auditor's report highlighted how many after action recommendations from prior disasters were not implemented, and it identified many that would have made a huge difference had they been implemented. So I think it's really important that we have a clear way forward so that we prevent the same situation happening again from the recommendations that are coming forward in these reports. And I appreciate that there was some effort in the discussion today to to lead with that, but it but it is still kind of hard to follow, which means that three years from now, we won't know if we've made progress on the things that we have to make progress on. So I want to ask the city manager, how do we prevent that from happening again? Because it is it is heart wrenching to read through these recommendations, to understand we had 400 recommendations from the LCRA water boil situation, many of which weren't implemented, some of which were repeated in other after action reports for other things that had we had them in place would have helped some portion of the community, would have helped our employees to better weather the storm. So how are we going to prevent that from happening? What is the the management structure that we are using to put the priority on these items moving forward so that we know the things that have to get done, get done this time?
Appreciate that, council member, and we have certainly been focused on that internally within the executive team and looking at the tracking mechanisms that we have internally. And so looking both at the recommendations from the past, but more importantly, what we see in front of us now, as as Director Ortiz said, he's already prioritized a number of them going forward. But I have not requested, demanded that we have an ongoing reporting structure, not just within the executive team, but to council. So there's some transparency around how we are able to show that progress and to be very eyes wide open about what what steps need to still be taken so you know what work has been done and what hasn't been done. And so I think the the way that we're tracking internally on our own on our own work, the way that the auditor is tracking the recommendations that came from that, which is an ongoing basis, and they'll have follow up reports for the audit and finance committee, and then the the demand that I made to staff to ensure that there's a feedback loop so we can be transparent with the council and the community about how progress on those recommendations.
Thank you. As part of that, if you can also make sure that we're seeing what's been prioritized so that because there by my last count, there's like over 600 recommendations, some of which overlap, and we know we have to prioritize, and not everything's going to give us the same bang for the buck in terms of preparedness. But but we do have to be able to see that so that we can track it and have that transparency. I want to make one more comment and then ask one other question. So in the AE report, it does make clear that the storm really started on February 11th. You know, and in the in the material that I've seen from AE, they understand there were kind of two storm events. There was the the ice storms and the cold weather that happened before the ERCOT load shed, and then there was the ERCOT load shed and the various parts afterwards. I did not see that reflected in the Hagerty after action report, and I think we missed that in that discussion at our peril because all of the things that happened afterwards, I was experiencing, it was something like 40% of my district was out of power. We experienced everything that everyone else experienced the next week, three days sooner. And so, you know, that HESSOM wasn't activated on the night of February 11th, when we had so many people out of power with with the ice storm, that we were looking for shelters. You know, I have texts with the city manager where I'm asking, you know, we need to set up shelters and 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 none of that was happening and and rolling out. And so I'm concerned that if our after action report doesn't recognize that piece, that we're missing some key insights. And it may happen again that you have a portion of the city experienced an event before the rest of the city, and and we have to learn from learn from that.
Councilmember, you know, would like to sit down to know exactly what specific point you're you're looking at, indicating that that the after action report did not go far enough. You know, my understanding is the that we did have some interactions prior to the 11th, and we do every winter season, whenever certain criteria is met to open up what we call a cold weather shelter, we 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 open up a cold weather shelter, primarily serves those that are homeless that need a place to spend the night. And that night on the 11th, actually, the night before that, we had already activated cold weather shelters prior to that that weekend happening. Believe the 11th is the, is that a?
Thursday night.
Thursday? Correct. And so we did activate that Thursday night, a cold weather shelter. In fact, it was because of the pandemic, a lot of the volunteer agencies were not available to provide staff, and we actually utilized HESSOM staff to go out there and assist with the registration, making sure those folks that needed to get to a cold weather shelter that night got to a cold weather shelter location. The challenge here is that you have a series of events, and in fact, I think there was a total of three storms that came through that that series. The main part of the citywide impact did not start happening until that Friday, and I believe maybe that's why the the report might concentrate that on started on that Friday.
I guess my experience of that weekend was very different than any of my colleagues, and I remember having texts and comments with my colleagues about what I was going through, and none of them were going through what my district was going through at that point in time. And it was exactly what everyone else went through the next week. I'd just sort of already been through it, and every piece of what happened with the outage maps and every other thing, we already knew was going wrong over the weekend, and then we had the other on top of it. And I just think it's it's we're not going to be able to get to bottom of it in this forum, but you know, maybe we can have some follow up conversations because I think there there are lessons and things to be learned where where we saw what was happening and we didn't adapt and adjust in ways. And I understand, you know, hindsight is 2020, 2021 these days, but but I just want to make sure that we are not viewing these events as that they started at February 15th at 1:00 in the morning, because it's not what most would a good chunk of the city experienced, and and I don't see that in the report. So I had said I had a second question, the first that was our observation, but what I understood from the auditor's report was that there were requests that were made by HESSOM in the budget that were not granted, but I didn't get a grasp on what those were. And I and I, you know, this is part of the budget process that happens every year that, and this is the city manager's role to, you know, work with departments, determine what things advance and what doesn't. But never having seen what HESSOM asked for but didn't get concerns me. So I'd like some greater transparency because clearly from a lot of these reports, we need to have a slightly different infrastructure. At HESSOM, 15 people cannot prepare us for the climate of climate disasters or 13 people that we're facing, and a lot of the recommendations suggest additional resources. So I'd like some greater transparency, either now or in a follow up, about what HESSOM has asked for and what they were given, what they were not given. And then, as I expressed at audit and finance, I'm really concerned with this notion that we're going to wait till the fiscal year 23 budget process to get them the resources that they need and not consider a budget amendment. We do have some funding from at least the $4 million that we put aside from development services. This has got to be one of our highest priorities, and and yes, we have a budget process, but if you can't do your job at the level we need you to do it because we haven't resourced you, then we have to have the discussion about those resources, and they need to be prioritized as we're trying to fulfill the recommendations over what's going to give us the best bang for the buck. And so I think that process needs to happen, and it needs to happen sooner rather than later, because it's already November.
Yeah. Let me just assure you that we will not wait for the next fiscal year if there are recommendations and resources that are being requested by HESSOM, that we would bring those back in the budget amendment. And then I will follow up on the audit question because we need to get that from the auditor on other previous recommendations that maybe weren't funded, and so I'll follow up with you on getting you that answer.
Councilmember Kelly, then Councilmember Tovo.
Thank you. I definitely agree with Councilmember Alter about not wanting to wait. Disasters aren't things that you can just plan to have happen, they happen when they do. I wonder, Director Ortiz, how many other departments within the city have emergency management roles that you work with on a regular basis?
Oh, Councilmember, that's a really, really good question. Let me just start probably the the larger departments would be Austin Energy, Austin Water, Austin Police Department. But every department in the city also has identified emergency management, single points of contact, which we meet with them to coordinate the emergency management activities.
Okay.
But as far as positions, civilian positions, those are the the three that that stand out.
Okay. And then earlier, when you were answering Mayor Adler's question, you had talked about letting voluntary organizations, probably VOADs, active in disaster, leading on specific things during a disaster. Could you maybe give me a little more insight into that? Because my understanding is that all disasters are local and government code, Texas Government Code, Chapter 418, really directs what we need to do as a city in order to respond to disasters. And what I want to make sure is that we're not giving away authority to voluntary organizations when it is we are charged by the state to lead on that.
That is absolutely correct, Councilmember. The Chapter 418, and in my practice and research, says that disasters are a local responsibility, and and whenever we have the state or federal government, we want to make sure that they can assist us, but don't we're not passing the authority or the responsibility to any outside agency. And and our emergency operations plan, our city charter kind of spells out that disasters are local, and I'm here to assure you that we we are local, and I'm here to assure you that we, we, we recognize that, and we see that, and we see the value of that, and we're committed to making sure that we are involved in the decision and, and the ultimate responsibility of how emergency management is handled at a local government level. That being said, I, I think that it's, we also recognizing the fact that, that we need the entire community because the emergency operations plan is not the city's plan, it is the community's plan, and it also provides a structure of how all the different private sector, non-government agencies, VOAD agencies, volunteer organizations active in disaster play in the sandbox in the event of a disaster. And, and so we want to make sure, what I wanted to make sure the message got across is that we are actively engaging, and we're going to continue to actively engage with these volunteer agencies, making sure that we identify the proper role that they, that they play, as well as understand the limitations of what they can do so that we can be prepared if we need to, to come up with a joint solution for everybody.
I appreciate that whole community approach. So my last question is, what is the timeline for the Resilience Hub rollout? You had mentioned it a little bit earlier, but I'd like to know more about when we might expect to see that occur.
You know, for that, I'm, I'm not sure if Lucia is available. I, let me get back to you on that as far as the timeline is concerned. We are, we're meeting every other week, and, and we, we have an active team that is meeting to, to come up with a rollout, and I don't want to steal the thunder on, on that, but I think it may be better if I can have Lucia from the, the Director for Office of Sustainability be able to provide you a better answer than I can.
Thank you.
And Councilmember, it was brought up at the last Public Health Committee meeting, and so there's a presentation and a discussion among councilmembers at that committee meeting on the Resilience Hubs.
Councilmember Tovo.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume that, that we're having just a short, what's our parameter here today for this conversation? Are we looking to take a break at lunchtime?
Well, we're going to lose one at 2:30.
Okay.
So that's our constraint. So part of it is just getting a assessment for how much more people want to go, to see if people want to, to, to continue this conversation or what point.
So I have, I have a lot of questions that probably are better submitted through the Q and A. I just want to step back and talk a little bit about the difference between the, the different kind of reports that we got. So to my colleagues who haven't read the audit, I concur with Councilmember Alter's suggestion that that's a really, I think it's very helpful to line all of these up together, and I am particularly interested, Manager, in, in the question of why some of those really specific implementation recommendations were not being, had not been implemented, from language access to some of the cross-training among staff, to the staffing plans for, for non, for departments that aren't necessarily within HESSOM or part of the, part of the Emergency Operations Center. And, and I, I think that, you know, my goal is to make sure that the actions that we take on this council are really aimed at addressing what, what is a priority in all of these reports, which is to make sure that our community is better prepared, that we're building, we're building a city structure that is able to respond to the disasters of 2021 and beyond, which are very different from the disasters it may have experienced in previous years, and that we are doing everything we can to equip not just the city to be able to respond, but to equip our community. And so thank you for talking about the Resilience Hubs, which is in response to the recommendation I brought with my colleague's support. I think that is an important component. I think it is not, you know, certainly there is a, a lot more we need to do. And so, you know, in, in trying to understand, you know, one, I'm interested in understanding in a bit more detail why some of those recommendations did not move forward, did not get implemented. Was it a resource issue, as Councilmember Alter identifies? Was it a need for a different kind of structure? Was it a need for stronger management connection to some of that work? It is not so much an, an interest in trying to figure out where, where the gaps were, but to make sure that we really understand, we really understand it and can, and can be prepared, better prepared next time. It's my understanding the after-action report is something that is done in conjunction with the consultant, and so, you know, is, is just a different kind of report from the independent audit, and I think we need, we really need both of those. I've identified a couple areas. We, we saw such a need, in my opinion, during this disaster for those other department staff to become involved, and so some of the, some of the recommendations that I think are really important ones in the after-action report are about, you know, how we, how is the broad array of staff at the city trained to, to participate in disaster response? How are we, what is our infrastructure like here at the city to support those community organizations? Not that we believe it's their responsibility, because as you all have just talked about, it is the city, the city has a particular role in disaster response, it's mandated by law and is in a position to do it, but many of the, many of the comments from the community resilience, the community resilience work to the task force that are community task force members, to the comments that were in various other reports, identify that need for better communication with those community volunteer efforts, more communication within the city, and I think to do that is probably going to require a real, a real focus on how, how, what your structure looks like at the EOC in terms of that communication. And so, you know, as I approached this today and last week, it's, it's unclear, there's a lot here, and, and, you know, we can handle specific questions through the Q and A, but I also am very interested in how we as a council follow up. And so colleagues, I, if, I know there are several of you on the dais who are interested in this work especially. I, to me, I, it's looking more and more like there might be a real need to have an IFC kind of laying out where, where and when we will get reports back about some of these areas of really highest importance. I really appreciate Jackie Sargent, the way you approached your report in particular, and, and told us exactly when those are going to happen, and Mayor, you filled in that we should get some kind of report back. I think if we can, if we can do that with the totality of these recommendations, I think we would, we would then as, as policymakers really understand where there might be a need for additional policy direction to our staff or additional resources, but it's, it's going to take some time to sort out. You know, I never want to be in a position where I'm looking at an after-action report again and looking at, at the comment here. I know several of us have talked about this off the dais, so I'll talk about it here. You know, there is a, an after-action recommendation about providing training for, for the city council and better communication with the city council. A lack of training for some city council members in EOC processes contributed to challenges in coordinating the response to field operations. At the same time, some city council members observed gaps in the preparation and capabilities of departments to provide solutions that address the needs of the community. You know, the problem, as I see it, as I experienced it, as probably some of you did too, was not that, was not that we didn't understand we were getting out of our lane, we didn't know who else was meeting those really critical needs of making sure that our constituents had access to water, that they had a safe place to go within walking distance, that they had, you know, buckets to flush the toilets in one of our congregant shelters. So, you know, I, I, I am concerned about this kind of an observation even being in our after-action report because it is, it is, it, that is not where, that, that was certainly a product of, of that week. Several of us stepped way out of our lanes, most of us stepped way out of, of what you would expect of your elected officials because, because of some of the other issues, the communication, not knowing where to forward needs to and whatnot. So I think, you know, I appreciate the conversation we've had today, I appreciate these reports. I think we are going to be better prepared for the next disaster. Thank you for beginning today's conversation by talking about some of the things that have been implemented. I really want to figure out how we as a council kind of get that additional level of details about it and, and are especially really just up to date on when those recommendations are coming forward.
Yes. Hang on one second. Councilmember Ellis, then Councilmember Kitchen.
There's been a couple of things I definitely identify with when Councilmember Alter talks about energy lines. We definitely saw it with the, the water infrastructure, and so I really hope, and we have had good conversations with Austin Water over the past few months, and so these are things that we've been able to communicate, and they have definitely been responsive and are working toward things like when people look to them for potable water, what's, what's that looking like moving forward? So I'm confident those, those action items are, are definitely taking place, but I just know that in, in some of the situation, we had, you know, folks in, in my district, and I'm looking at you even though I know this is, there's water infrastructure issues going on in that location, but understanding who's going to be first offline and the last back on. A lot of my district, even though some of the roads and highways were either melting or clear, there were still portions of the district that were highways and bridges that were still covered in ice and snow in some of the locations that were without water for a whole week. So I, I know that moving forward, we need to be much quicker about how, how to understand what the expectations are for, for a lot of these items, water distribution, you know, electricity repair lines, resilience hubs, things of, of that nature. But I, I will agree that a lot of us, as Councilmember Tovo was saying, we were just stepping up and doing what we could because we didn't know what else to do, and people were sharing information and saying, I have some of this, or can you find me a person who has this skill, and really trying to do that. So I do agree that we need to understand if we're going to rely on, on city departments to do certain things, we need to understand more about how that works, because I didn't really know who to look at and who to turn to, and most of the information I got was after I already knew it was a problem. So I just want to make sure that we are moving forward, especially because we know that floods, wildfire, and winter storms, and other natural disasters are going to be happening more frequently. Like I, I know that you had mentioned, City Manager, but I tell people that these issues of not having energy, not having water are going to happen no matter what the natural disaster is. It's not just a storm that's going to do it. Floods have caused water infrastructure problems. You know, wildfire is definitely going to have impacts. A lot of my district too has the wildland urban interface that I know a lot of us talk about oftentimes, and so I appreciate the, the leaning on kind of understanding when we're going to get updates and how we can communicate that information back to our constituents, because I, I do think it's inappropriate, and one of the most important tasks of government is to step up when things are going wrong, and there's things that, that aren't nice to haves, they're need to haves, like heat and, and drinkable water. And so I know there's a lot of departments stepping up in this, I just also want to make sure that we know what's going on and how to communicate that to our constituents. A lot of us can also have that, that communication back to the departments so that we understand who's got access to the neighborhood list, who's the person everybody looks to on next door, where, you know, where can we store water, and where, where do we have roundabouts that water distribution are helpful? And so that's the kind of stuff that a lot of us know on the ground, just because we, we see it and we know our neighbors and we know how communication works in our district. And so it kind of felt a little disjointed there where we are all going to have a different, you know, communication plan to our constituents, but understanding how to look to the, the departments and emergency management, and one will get those updates with something that was, was very confusing at the time.
Yes, I, I agree with what my colleagues have been saying. I wanted to, I think the implementation, the specific implementation or reporting approach, you know, an implementation plan reporting is helpful. We'll be doing that in Austin Water. We've already been getting reports from Austin Water about all the actions they're taking, and we'll continue to do that on a regular basis, and we'll let my colleagues know when those are happening, so you can participate in those. Not that that's the only, I'm not suggesting that's the only avenue, I'm just wanted to let my colleagues know that we've been having some really good conversations in Austin Water, and the intent is to continue that and also to understand specifically from Austin Water, the, the timeline for implementation. Some of that we've already had, and what we've been doing is delving into things. So for example, the, the AMI, which is a, is a really very helpful innovation that's been rolling out, we've had very specific presentations on that, and that metering is, is help, is going to help this situation, helped during the last winter storm, but as it's rolled out all over the city, it's really going to make a difference. So that's just one example. I also want to point you all, and you may have all, all seen this, but I wanted to thank Austin Water for the tips and toolkits they sent to all of us that we can then send out to our constituents. It's a very useful set of tools that we'll be sending out, and I think that came to us, for those who may be looking, it came to us, I'm not sure what day, but in any case, that information is available to us. And so I just want to appreciate the work that's been done by Austin Water and also by all of us, all of you in emergency management. And I think if we work with the city manager and with each of you to have a structured reporting mechanism so that we know specifically when the different recommendations are being acted on, that will help us do what we need to do to confirm that activities are occurring and to know when they're occurring. So I think that would be, from my perspective, that would be helpful.
Hang on. Councilmember Rendria, then Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I agree with you, Mayor, and you know, I was alarmed with the rolling blackouts, which we didn't have. I think that if, if we had had rolling blackouts, we would have saved a, a lot of more lives here in Austin and Traverse County area. You know, a lot of the new appliance that people in my neighborhood had, and I'm sure that it's true throughout the city of Austin, you can't turn your, your, your kitchen on on, and you can't, your, your furnace don't turn on without electricity. You can't cook anything without electricity because, you know, the new stoves have these electronic igniters now, and if you don't have any kind of energy, you're not going to turn it on. If, if we're going to have to live with rolling, with blackouts, completely blackout without rolling blackouts for a while until, I guess, we get all the circuits done, I think it's very important to, to identify to the public where these locations are and what we're going to be doing for these people when they are out of electric for days, you know, for two or three days. You know, I, I have an apartment complex there that's Rebecca Bain for seniors, that they kept on being told that it's going to come on the next day and the next day, and they, you know, believed it, and it didn't come back on the next day. And we had to have firefighters go out there and evacuate the seniors, and we're talking about a 200-foot building there, and from the 16th floor, they had to be carried down. So I really want to know if, if we're going to be addressing the rolling blackouts, are we going to have rolling blackouts, or are we going to have sections of the city that are not going to be able to participate in it because we have essential hospitals, fire stations that need to stay online 24 hours a day, which I understand, but we really need to, you know, get down and find out where are the sections of town that's not going to have their energy turned back on because they're not part of the rolling blackout. And that's what I really want to see in the future, where either they're going to tell us the truth about whether we're living in a section of town where they can not be participating in, in rolling blackouts.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. Colleagues, I wanted to highlight, I know that the city auditor's after-action review, reviewed the last few after-action reports. I went back a few years, but one thing that I wanted to highlight is that there was an after-action report done after the 2013 Halloween flood, so nearly eight years ago. That called for corrective action plan, including several communication-based recommendations, clarifying the regional paging system used for the notification of the EOC activation, developing a notification group in First Call to provide regular updates to management and elected officials, conducting community information meetings, developing a network of grassroots community contacts to help disseminate critical information, collaborate with community volunteer organizations for consistent communication to residents. This was flagged eight years ago. I'm sure there's probably more after-action, action, after-action reports before then.
I'm sure there's probably more after-action, after-action reports before then. So for me, it's extremely important that we follow through with these implementations as quickly as possible, that we implement these recommendations as quickly as possible, and that we're communicating that out to our community about the progress that the city of Austin is making to address these concerns. I had a town hall recently, and a lot of the questions that I'm getting is, what is the city of Austin doing? How are y'all ensuring that we don't freeze again in our homes? And those are, those are real questions that I know several of us are having to respond to. And so if we can think through a format, and, and this is super helpful, having all of these after-action reports, but there's just a lot of information there. And I would love to be able to share confidently that we are now making changes to our, our circuits and our load shed strategy, and have identified ways to, to provide flexible responses to another emergency event. And so, Manager, I appreciate your commitment to ensuring that we receive regular updates on progress that's being made, and especially as it relates to any additional resources that will be needed during a mid-year budget amendment. I, I look forward to hearing more about that. And the question I have for you, Director Ortiz, is I know you mentioned that tomorrow y'all will be meeting with inner agencies about the winter emergency plan. That's really great to hear. And so do we know, or how, once y'all meet, and I'm assuming you're going to go over the plan, you'll probably make updates to the plan with consideration of the recommendations that came out of the after-action report. How does, how does council get notified of any updates they y'all make to that winter emergency plan?
So let me make sure that I clarify, the seminar that's going to be taking place tomorrow is focused on making sure that the different departments share their, their portions of, of the overall response. If there are significant changes that we need to make, we will make them, and we will send out a correspondence to council through the city manager to let y'all know the, the updated changes, and we can send you a copy of that, of that document.
And so, I mean, you anticipate that there will be changes made to the plan?
I would, I would say that there probably going to be some changes, yes. What changes, we'll find out as we go, work through tomorrow.
Okay, yes, yeah. I would anticipate as well, given that we have several recommendations that have been lined out from this most recent after-action report. But I think it's great that you are, that we have this space, the departments come together and are able to share, because I think on everyone's mind is, you know, we're approaching winter again, and so having, you know, a notification that the plan has been updated, knowing that this is a priority of council to ensure that we're following through on our recommendations, is critical. So I just wanted to flag that as well.
And let me also add, if I can, talking with the different city directors and the different departments, they've communicated to me how they have already started some activities at the departmental level, and some are, some are scheduled in the coming days after this event tomorrow. So I, I see the organization being more proactive and looking at what we can do to make sure we're ready for the upcoming winter weather season.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on this issue, this point? We're going to follow up with additional questions. Kathy, I'll join you in conversations about how to get, together with other colleagues on the dais, to figure out how we program in the, kind of the updates on, on the progress being made to the after-action goals and that are, that are set.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I just regard this as a matter of real urgency. I think that's what you're hearing from our colleagues up and down, up and down the dais. And so, Manager, I would just really emphasize, this is, this is really an urgent matter. I hope you will provide the level of management oversight and resources that our staff need to really make sure that we're better prepared.
Azar Kassar.
Mayor, thank you. And I'll keep my three immediate points short, because I, listening to the conversation, a lot was covered. But in reviewing the auditor's report for me, seeing how low some of the Warren Central Texas registration rates are in some of our communities that can be hardest hit by disaster was really concerning, and I think we have to find other ways that are not just opt-in or app download to get that information. You know, I have friends that have traveled recently, and when they land in some states, they get a text immediately, even though they don't even live there, about pandemic restrictions and other kinds of emergency response. So just somewhere where I really think we need work, because I just don't think we can rely on, on, on Warren in and of itself. Then second, you know, reading in the auditor's report, the number of days that we went between our first Warren message and our first message in Spanish multiple days later. I know that that's been highlighted. I know that it's an issue, but I, just seeing it written down, how many days there were, was just really disappointing. I know how hard it is to coordinate such a big thing, but, you know, in my own council office, we were doing the translations ourselves, and we're a team of four, and we know the city has much broader resources than that. So I just wanted to highlight that part as something that we just have to do different. And I know it was highlighted in the Halloween flood reports on how we can handle communications. And then third and last, I appreciate the Austin Energy work on working with commercial and industrial customers to voluntarily ramp down. I don't know if it was noted in one of the multiple reports, for us to have a voluntary way to address the shoes downtown, because I know that it's a complex system, and the downtown system is different. But I think if we want people outside of downtown to conserve, having downtown all lit up, we really learn sends the wrong message. And so having really close partnerships there to be able to ramp that down, I think is something we need to take away for any future, for any future outage situation.
Councilmember Kassar, just to give a quick answer to the first point you brought up, and it's a very, very key point you, you highlighted. Actually, the, the system that we use is a part of a 10-county system through the councils of governments. And I would say that, and we indicated this on the, on the after-action report, the auditor was indicating on the self-opt-in registrations. That gives you the most versatility in utilizing that notification tool. You can actually go in there and say, I want to be notified for winter freeze warnings, tornado warnings, flood warnings. We encourage, and we want everybody in our community to sign up for those. In addition to that, working our office, working with the council governments, we actually have acquired a more robust database that allows us to send out text notifications or ring-down notifications that are, that we are acquiring and making available outside of the normal opt-in. And when you look at, at that totality of the data, it's above 50%, and, and we're probably one of the highest in the country. And that has given us the ability, especially during the pandemic, when we have utilized the tool to ring down, have a much greater penetration of getting that information out. Now, there's room for improvement, and there's room for us to improve also in how we utilize those tools. And so, yes, we're working on, on those issues.
Okay, colleagues. All right. Thank you very much, Manager. Thank you. It's 12:15. We will break for lunch until 1:00. At 1:00, how about if we go?